No.
Yeah, I know.
Seven o'clock, meeting will come to order. I'm Grace Lusbrance, Cascade Township Supervisor. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Lusbrance.
Here.
Treasurer Pears.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Here.
And Clerk Slater.
Thank you. Please rise, if possible, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to apply in the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second. It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by clerk Slater, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article four, presentations. Tonight, we have Ms. Danielle Bouchard from McKenna and Associates. She's here to talk about the strategic plan and give the board an update on where we are at with that. Quick, quick announcement, the SAD ad hoc committee appointments. Those applications are due to the township this week.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, and so that will be on next week's agenda. Ms. Bouchard, welcome.
Thank you. It's nice to see you guys again. Just as a quick recap, my name is Danielle Bouchard. I'm a senior planner with McKenna. Myself and the West Michigan Grand Rapids manager, Chris Corey, have been working with township staff, steering committee to develop the strategic plan. As you guys know, we were hired by the township and awarded the contract for the strategic plan process back in early summer of this year. The primary purpose of the plan is to help the township determine and organize, define biggest priorities over to four, forty year, four to five year time period. The overall content of the plan will include action oriented projects, programs, and steps, and administrative tasks, and other elements that will help transform the township's visions into reality. Perhaps most importantly, the strategic plan will be developed through a robust public engagement program. The republic engagement program that we've kind of helped form, and it's still kind of forming as we go along, is, the hope is to reach out to every township resident, business owner, and everybody that we can, to have a multi-faceted and multi-pronged approach to make sure that every voice has the opportunity to be heard in the township. In July twenty of this year, this board approved the formation of a strategic plan steering committee. This has been a process that we've used in several communities that we've worked with, that we found to be extremely advantageous, and not only helping us to make sure that we are provided with important institutional background of certain municipalities, and specifically Cascade Township. But the strategic plan also helps us to validate project goals and keep the project moving forward according to plan, and also make sure that there are different voices that come from, or that sit on the steering committee that have different interests in various components of the township that we can make sure that each facet is addressed, such as DDA, Township Board, Planning Commission, Township Staff, things like that. So completed to date, the work that we've done is that we've met with the steering committee twice a month, the second and fourth Friday of each month from ten to twelve typically in this room. To, and, sorry, we've been meeting since August. We did not have a meeting last week, but we're still kind of in that process of doing the first community survey. So we're just kind of moving forward with that. So the tasks, tasks that we have coming up are to administer the survey. The supervisor Lusbrance has also notified that she would be, would like to send out a newsletter to township residents first to let them know that this survey is coming and just to get everybody excited about it. And so that way, we can get more voices coming through as, once everything is kind of distributed. So the first step is that we're, we've been working with township staff to finalize a list of all of taxpaying properties in the township, so we can send everything out in the mail. And then that will also coincide with an online survey as well. So people will have the opportunity to do a paper survey, send it back to the township, and then or, and/or go online and take an online survey as well. We also plan to administer postcards, window signs, anything and everything with our contacts through the DDA and business communities and things like that, to kind of reach out to make sure that this is a multi-pronged, multi, multi-faceted public engagement approach. So we plan on, or as of right now, the plan is to have the first survey live and open to the public for, like, probably within the next couple of weeks or so until the end of the year. From that point, we'll take all of that data that we got from the first survey, and we'll calibrate those results. And then we'll begin kind of this phase two of the public engagement process, where we would like to take our, and this is kind of where we're bouncing back to the original scope of, of where our proposal was, that we'll, we'll do those stakeholder workshops that we have outlined there. So that will be with this group, that'll be with the planning commission, with the DDA, and other important stakeholders that are deemed necessary. So that process might be a little bit flexed, depending on if there are other groups identified that we should reach out to specifically, and things like that. Another advantageous activity that we foresee probably happening, and with, of course, the blessing of the township, is probably a pub, a public open house held at any or municipal building. So that way, you know, folks will have the opportunity to participate virtually. They have the opportunity to sit in at our steering committee meetings. Those are open to the public. They're not a secret. And they have the opportunity to mail in their survey. They'll have an opportunity to, and send their comments online. So we are planning to reach out to multiple different groups within the township. So that's another piece that the steering committee has been extremely helpful with, is that they have different connections to different groups that we can kind of reach out to and make sure that people are taking the survey. These of which include the DDA, homeowners associations, parks and rec crew, business park, industrial park businesses, things like that. So the upcoming tasks and general timeline. So like I mentioned, we're kind of hoping to do this first push for community input for the rest of this year, and then the phase two of that will be more in-person input. It should also be noted too, that the results from the first survey will, one, the results of that will be utilized in a multitude of different ways. The first of which is that we're hoping to use the results of the first survey to identify the top issues that survey respondents have identified in the township. These are going to likely become the township's, township's biggest priorities for the next four to five years. And I, and the survey will also help us determine, you know, what are the things that the township's already doing great at? What, what needs to not be changed and maybe just maintained? And I think that that, that information is just as important as what does need to be changed. And thirdly, the results of the survey will also help us identify people in, in different residents or business owners in the township that are interested in further public engagement processes. So those people that we'll reach out to, if they say, hey, we're, we would love to be a part of this process and continue this public engagement program with the township, then those can be formed into smaller focus groups where we can have more in-person meetings. Let's say maybe at neighborhood churches or business, local businesses, or things like that. So we'll be working with those folks who say that they would like to be part of the process to kind of reach out to their friends and neighbors and family. So we can widespread this, the word about this as much as possible. So from that point, we're looking at developing the project goals and objectives. And then periodically, of course, we'll be checking in with this board as needed and as requested to make sure that, you know, you guys know where we're at in the process, what comes next, or if you have any questions. And then from that point, the project's goals and objectives will be drafted, and then we'll start formulating the draft plan. So the draft plan content will be that action oriented, likely tables and highly graphic information that'll show, these are the township's largest priorities, and this is what, what, you know, each board and committee should be focusing on these areas and things like that. So that will be administered back out to the public for review and comment. So we want to make sure that the township residents, stakeholders, business owners, taxpayers, not only have an opportunity to have their voice be heard for phase one, but also to make sure that their voice is validated in phase two. So everyone knows, hey, the township is listening to you, and your voice is important. And the most important, as we, you know, figure out what our biggest priority should be over the next four to five years. So then from that point, we'll be taking in comments from not only the, the public, which will likely be in the form of a second community survey to validate those project goals. But we'll also be taking in comments from township staff, board, planning commission, DDA, you know, other, other groups that we want to disperse and distribute this plan out to. From that point, a second draft, I'm assuming that there'll be revisions. So a second draft will then be put together from there, and then we'll kind of move forward with the drafting, revising, checking in, and hopefully then adoption process. So please note, though, that we do plan this process to be a bit flexible, mostly because there are, and the steering committee has also been very beneficial in this way too, that to let us know that maybe there are some other steps that need to be taken in order to make sure that there, the word is being properly spread about this, about this project, and about the survey and things like that. So there might be, you know, we might change up something and say, okay, well, maybe we'll add in another focus group meeting, or maybe we'll add in another township board meeting, or public open house, or something like that. So, you know, Chris and I are available to flex with this process and to add in or subtract, or kind of, you know, finagle with how we go about getting all of the public engagement that we need. So I think that pretty much concludes where we're at and where we're going. And hopefully that was easy to understand. I apologize if I kind of jumped around a little bit there. And I'm open to any questions, if anyone has any.
Just real quick, before we get into questions, the newsletter comes out, and this is not, this is just for the public. The newsletter comes out mid-December, so I know the goal is to get it, the first questionnaire earlier than that, so it will be the, just a brief letter emphasizing citizen involvement, not a newsletter.
Oh, thank you. Sorry.
And then second, this is more for our staff. I'm looking on the, I just pulled it up. I hadn't checked before. I don't see any of the past or future scheduled steering committee meetings on the calendar. Could be wrong, but I'm just looking right now. So those should, those needed to be and should be on the calendar. Public.
I'll make sure that it's taken care of.
Thank you.
I just have one question.
Later.
It says, on page one, the steering committee has identified the following activities to spread the word about the survey. Send a copy of the survey via certified mail to each property. Wouldn't we more practically use first-class mail for that? Certified mail is seven dollars a letter.
Oh, first class. Thank you.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah, I mean, whatever makes the most sense, I think.
First-class mail?
Yeah, absolutely. Whatever. I apologize. I didn't.
Don't worry. Just a second.
Trustee McDonald?
Yeah, I got a couple of things, Danielle. By the way, Ben has told us that the advisory committee, and you guys are doing a great job. They really appreciate the feedback. They appreciate the input from the advisory committee. And, and that's just one thing. By the way, when we officially authorized this, we did it with an advisory committee. It's really not a steering committee, just to be consistent with what we.
Sure.
Approve. And, and I guess where, really where I'm going is, is I understand about defining projects. We defined a project. You quoted us, I think it was around eighteen thousand three hundred dollars. That's what we approved. I'm hearing now there's going to be additional things outside of that scope, which is fine. I, I get that. My, my business, we do this all the time. We, we define projects. I have to monitor them, but if I tell a customer this project is a hundred thousand dollars, they don't like surprises. They don't want to be fifty percent or eighty percent through it, have me come back and say, oh, sorry, but it's going to be a hundred and twenty thousand, right? So I guess I'm asking, now that you've got a better feel for the project, for what you're going to need to do, for the input from the advisory committee, can you create a, like a contract addendum for us that says, we see these activities, such as the additional advisory committee meetings? For example, if you're going to do a meeting with the board, with the planning commission, with the DDA, and those aren't in the original project? What I don't want to do is steal time for out of scope work and steal that from the project that we approved without knowing what that is. Because ultimately, the board is responsible for the cost, the board is responsible for the process. So it's not an open check project. We just don't want to be surprised. So if we could have a nice contract addendum that says, these are the types of additional out of scope activities that we think are going to be required, and it's going to be an additional hundred hours, for example. I think we'd be happy to authorize that and approve it. We just don't want surprises. And so i- is that possible to kind of come back, now that you've got a good feel for it?
Yes. So that was something that I neglected to mention during my spiel, was that I wanted to take the feedback from this group first, and then Chris and I will sit back down and then put a table together. Here are tasks, here are costs, and here's kind of what we foresee perhaps occurring outside of what we originally agreed upon. And then we'll kind of move forward from there.
Yeah, because what I was concerned about is, as I read through your document, which is really good, I like the timeline. You know, I don't know how much time it's going to take for you, or if you've already built it into that eighteen thousand three hundred dollar project for the meetings with the board specifically, or the DDA, or the planning commission, et cetera. So if, if you think that's going to take extra time, that, that, those are some of those tasks that we'd like to see, or services, and then some costs, because that way everybody's, you know, no surprises.
Yeah, yeah. So some of those are already built into what our original scope was, like the stakeholder workshops with you guys, planning commission, DDA. I think we have six of them total that we've listed. But if in the event that you guys or staff comes back and says, hey, we really think it'd be beneficial to add another workshop for this group, you know, so that's kind of where that flexibility may or may not come in. So maybe we'll, we'll build that in and let you guys know.
You noted in your, in your document that, that the advisory committee meetings weren't part of the project. And so, but you're doing them. So to me, if I'm a management, like my customer, they say you're doing those for free because they weren't authorized. And I'm not holding you to that. That was, that's not what we're going to do. But we just want to know what those are, and then about how much time.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, no problem. If anyone has anything that comes up, questions, comments, concerns after this meeting, feel free to reach out.
One last thing, I did notice, and this is great in your schedule for January twenty-two. That's when you want to have the public engagement workshops with the board, the planning commission, staff, DDA, et cetera. Can you schedule those as soon as possible? I mean, just so we can get it out to the public, and so we can get it on our calendars as well?
Sure.
I don't know if, and maybe you can work with Ben and, and Grace to pick, I, I don't know if you want to do it at our normal board meeting times, or at, and, you know, another time, you know, Tuesday evening or something, but just so we know ahead of time, it'd be really helpful.
Yeah, yeah, that I'll write that down, and I'll, we'll come up with something, maybe a doodle poll or something like that.
Okay.
And we'll figure out what works best for you guys.
Thanks, Danielle.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, guys. Article five, public comments. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address for record keeping. And following live comments, we'll see if we have any virtually. Thank you.
Anyone who's participating via Zoom, if you could push the raise hand button, or if you're on the phone, please press star nine. I'll wait a few moments. Lusbrance, I, there's no, no comment.
Thank you. Article six, approval of consent agenda. Is there discussion or a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Vote to approve.
Support.
Discussion?
I'd like to add something. There's a D letter, item three memo from trustee McDonald. I, I've asked Tom to remove that from the agenda. I don't think, I think it's really just a campaign letter. It's the same material that was distributed throughout the campaign for the last election, and I just don't think it has any reason to be on our agenda in, in this board. I certainly don't want to vote on this one particular thing. I'd like to see that removed from the consent agenda. So.
Can I ask a question, Tim?
Go for it.
Do you like good things when they occur in our township?
I do.
Do you think it's important to understand how events and decisions are interlocked and, and are connected? So we can move forward, look back, and look, move forward with new projects?
Here's my problem, is you're not looking at the present. This is only two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty. There's been almost an entire year that this board has done things, including you, on this board that are not in your memo at all. I think, I think this is nothing more than campaign material, and it should not, it doesn't have a place here. I tried to bring that up with you earlier privately, and I tried to bring it to the governance committee, but that was canceled. So here we are talking about it now.
Tim, all that is, is facts that brought us to today. It is not campaign material. I'm not running for any campaign. There's no election for three years. It's factual information that shows that we have reason to look back and know why we have a balanced budget, why we are triple A bond rated, why we're able to move forward with additional park projects, because we've been able to purchase property like Tuffy Muffler, and remove that eyesore, and they're all connected into helping us move forward. So it's only an expression of facts, of good things, that explains how we can move forward with great new things that I think that are going to come out of the strategic plan, and do it affordably, like being able to get the best rates possible for our new fire station, because we were able to decouple the township hall from the fire station and select a property. So it's, it's only factual information. It, it's nothing to at all with a campaign. There is no campaign.
It's the exact same material that had in your campaign, and there's been an entire year of progress that's not mentioned in this. So that makes it political in my mind.
Oh, I, I'll be glad to redo it and add the, the new things that have been added too. I agree. I just think it's good for us. I learned many years after my school days that history is valuable, to see how and why decisions were made, and how they impact us going forward. That's all I was trying to do, was explain how we got to where we are today. And if you want me to go back and include the things that have happened within the last year, I'm happy to. But we are in a position today to do things moving forward because of the past. And there were some comments made that said, we, we were not diligent in the past, and I think we were. And I just wanted to point that out. They're only positive things.
Yeah, and that's fine, but it shouldn't be on a consent agenda.
Move this along, come here. Tim, why don't you make a motion to remove it?
I want to make a motion to remove the memo from trustee McDonald from the consent agenda.
We have a, that's, first, though, there's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the entire consent agenda. So we have to vote on that before.
No.
Huh?
No.
Any other comments? I have one. Go ahead, trustee.
I think that Tom's got a good valid point, and I'd like to see, before we put this in the public record, I'd like to see, Tom, could you add this past year too?
Absolutely, John. Absolutely.
That's fine.
Just add, for, the consent agenda is so that we can efficiently approve routine matters. I don't have any problem with trustee McDonald's memo itself. It's the location of where to put it. The, the memo is subjective, regardless of if we all agree on it. It's subjective. And personally, I, I don't think for this board, it's, it's a good precedent to start including individual trustees' subjective opinions in the consent agenda for board approval. So it can be attached to the packet, but as far as proper placement of the consent agenda, there's better avenues, better locations to put it.
Yeah, board member comments.
Yes, and I'm not saying that was intentional. I just want to clarify.
I intended it to be in board member comments. That's where I made it. So what do we do administratively?
Well, it was last meeting.
Oh, I don't know how it got changed, but as long as we're all on the same page.
It was included in the packet after the last meeting because he submitted it as part of the supplement. So it's in that public record right there.
Oh, the problem is, I think what we're, the agenda itself right now, has it in the consent agenda.
Well, because we have to vote.
That's the whole, I don't think it's, it's not a, I, I think it's a bad precedent to start it requiring, asking the board to vote on individual trustees.
Again, it's just a letter, so we can vote on it and then make different, you know, do a different thing for next time. We can vote to approve or not approve the consent agenda.
As is.
Yeah.
Trustee Kessel, this was your motion. Do you want to keep it as is, or do you want to make any adjustments?
I, I leave it as is. Tom said he'd amend it, the letter to include the current thing, so. I guess if you're going to amend it, Tom, do you want it to stand as is, or would you just assume, wait till it's amended?
Um, we can submit it as amended. I mean, it's, it's going to be the same with, with, with the, with the request that John made, to make additions.
Well, then I, I would guess I withdraw my motion and tell Tom amends it, we can read it.
Well, I, I want it in there. I don't want to, I mean, I.
I know, I, but.
Jim's, Jim's got a valid point.
I think the issue is not knowing what's going to be on the amendment. We're just voting on what's there now. You said you would amend it to include current year. So I guess until I can see that, then I would. I, I'd still, I, I will, I will restate my motion to approve the consent agenda with memo from Tom being amended to be voted on at a future time.
Well, what, I'm, I'm concerned about your language there, because I don't think a board member should be censured for board member comments, and what you're saying is to censure comments from board members. So what I think we want to say is, is we can include it in the packet as a separate item. That's what Grace was saying. Include it, don't include it in the consent agenda. Include it in the packet as a separate item.
Then, then it has to be, there won't be, then I can't approve the consent agenda as it's written, because it's going to be moved. So possibly then, Jim is, approve the consent agenda with the removal of the memo from trustee McDonald until it's rewritten.
Okay, a- and put in the fol- a following packet.
Yeah, yeah, perfect.
And put in next week's packet to include the, the other additions from, from the last year, from the past year. Yeah.
You guys have all reset my motion, but I agree with you.
So that's a motion by trustee Nordhook, trustee McDonald, trustee Kessel, and trustee Shipley.
I think what you're saying, Jim, is, is to remove the current board member comments from the consent agenda.
And add it to a future.
And add it in next week's packet to include, to include actions, events from the past year.
Yes.
Yeah, but I don't think, but I don't think it's, we want to vote on that because it's, you know.
We need expertise.
An expert, but just for simplicity's sake, do we have to men, I'm asking a question. Do we need to mention that we're putting it in the packet next week? Or can we just say approval of consent agenda with removal of trustee McDonald's memo?
Somebody else has got to say it, so you got to tell me who it is.
Deputy clerk.
Deputy clerk.
She does not get to make. I'm joking.
Yeah, but, but my only concern, again, looking at this as we would, as anybody would, are we then censuring board member comments?
No, I, so I see what you're saying, and this is all on the record. One, I think you're right procedurally. Two, you're absolutely right also, and you can go on the record saying you'll, you'll bring it back. you can go on the record saying you'll you'll bring it back, it's just in a different spot in the packet.
Yeah, I just didn't want to set a precedent where we censure board member comments. So all of a sudden, if I decide I don't like Ken's comments, I want to remove those from the record.
That might happen.
Yeah, and I will, trust supervisor Last Prince, I will, and trustee McDonald, I will write that in the minutes that you will move it to a, you will amend it to a different spot in the packet for next meeting.
Yeah, we just want to, yeah, I I like that. So I think what you're saying, Jim, is you approve the consent agenda, removing member McDonald's comments. And those will be put into a different spot in the packet. They're not for vote, they're not for censure. They're just to be put in a different spot.
But.
May I make a comment, supervisor? Yes. Technically, for the record, they are already in the permanent record because they were entered in board member comments last time. So they're in the minutes, it's listed in the minutes that it happened, and it's already been attached to the supplement as part of the permanent record and is in the online packet already.
Yes, and I understand, but that's a separate issue from whether or not the board has authority to amend the consent agenda tonight as presented. So I think we already are, I think we're.
So, yeah, they're two separate things. I think we're all saying the same thing. They're two separate things.
So I don't disagree with what you're saying. I just think it's apples and orange. I mean, we're good. All right, that's a motion by trustee Kessel to approve the consent agenda with the removal of the of trustee McDonald's memorandum.
From the consent agenda.
From the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Way harder than needed to be.
Article seven, financial actions, we have none tonight. Eight unfinished business, we have no unfinished business tonight. New business. Item one zero eight, twenty twenty one, proposal for consulting services for the Brownfield redevelopment authority. Ms. Corhorn?
So the Brownfield redevelopment authority has been working with Susan Wenzlich from Fishbeck to assist the township and not only setting up the Brownfield authority, but also serving as consultants and providing third-party oversight for the Robinson Dental Brownfield project. We are close to reaching the end of the scope of work from the previous proposal. Any money spent on the grant administration that has occurred to date is reimbursable through the Eagle Grant. Under the grant, we get invoiced. We pay them and then Eagle reimburses us for those fees. So as part of the Robinson Dental Brownfield project, the township is required by Eagle to provide a third-party oversight consultant to work with the developers consultant and also to watch or to help us out, represent the township, our best interest. So again, the loan and grants does cover the cost for the oversight consultant. So there is a proposal from Fishbeck in the packet with a not to exceed fee. And the Brownfield redevelopment board did review this proposal at their October fifteenth meeting with Susan's previous experience working with the state of Michigan, at the state of Michigan, really, with Brownfields and her involvement with the Robinson Dental Project to date. The B R A board did approve the proposal and moved it forward to the township board for consideration. The B R A board, however, did request adding an exit clause to that proposal. And they asked that it be amended to a one-year term, so they wanted it to expire in one year. So Susan did agree to that. She did add that language to the document. As I mentioned, that proposal is included in the packet for your review and being passed on to you with a recommendation for approval from the Brownfield authority.
Sandra, it looks like on page two that it says about seven thousand of the seventy-five hundred dollar budget has been spent on grant administration so far. Do they feel that it's going to take another ninety-five hundred for the oversight?
Yes, she did.
Is that, is that more time consuming than what they've done so far?
So the previous proposal was to help us set up the Brownfield authority. And then we started digging into the Robinson Dental project. The Robinson Dental project is going full bore right now. So we will need third-party oversight until they finish the, you know, removing the contaminants from the site and so forth. So yes, she did think that additional.
Take more time than what's spent on so far.
Sandra, I got a question. I understand that the costs will be reimbursed by the state this year. Last year, did they, did we have any costs that we could have been reimbursed with, or did we, or?
We did not. Last year was really just setting up the Brownfield authority.
So that wasn't covered by us.
Correct.
Okay, cool.
Yep, so just the Robinson Dental work.
Thank you. You're welcome. Trustee Shipley?
I was just going to make a recommendation. I propose that we approve the proposal for consulting services, especially since Big Brother is going to give us nickel or two back for the support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Kessel, to approve the recommendation as stated for the Brownfield redevelopment authority consultant. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item one zero nine, twenty twenty one, agreement for professional assessor services.
I will, I will start off. So right now, we have a staffing model on our assessing department that has five employees. We have a contractual assessor that's required by the state to carry a M M A O level four certification. We have three full-time employees, our illustrious manager of assessing services, Jen Genter, who is here tonight. We have a full-time deputy assessor that also carries a M A O, A O or level three. We have a senior appraiser that carries a M C A O or level two, and then we have a part-time administrative assistant that carries recently acquired M C A certification. Congratulations to Chelsea on that. So in early two thousand twenty, our assessor Roger retired from the township after a very long career. And he served several roles in the assessing department. Prior to Roger obtaining his M M A O, M M A O certification, which again is the level that we're required to have from the state, we had a contractual assessor model where Roger served as the department head of the assessing department. And then when Roger attained the necessary certification, that contract was eliminated and Roger assumed the role of assessor. Upon Roger's retirement, we reverted back to the contractual assessor model. So we retained the services of M M A O certified assessor Debbie Ring. Debbie came from the city of Kentwood where she retired. And I I think everybody knew Debbie was also Roger's wife as well. And then we promoted deputy assessor Jennifer Genter to serve as the manager of assessing services and the department head of the department. And that structure is intended to be temporary as Jen pursues her M M A O certification. So Deb has indicated she's no longer able to serve as the township assessor due to personal reasons. And to replace Debbie, we've engaged Mr. Andy Johnson, who is here tonight as well. He is the current M M A O assessor for Kentwood. And he's come highly recommended from several sources and has served the city of Kentwood in various assessing roles since two thousand. I will note that we did look at two different models. We looked at the model of actually buying assessing services from Kentwood or contracting with Mr. Johnson individually. And Austin City Kentwood and Mr. Johnson all decided that the individual contract be the best way to go. So while Ms. Genter continues to pursue her M M A O certification, the current arrangement works very well. Contractual assessor provides the services required by the state as outlined in the state tax commission, supervising preparation of the assessment roll document. And the manager of assessing services serves as the department head and oversees the day-to-day operation. We did structure the contract, so when Jen does receive her M M A O certification, the contract can be severed. And at that point, Jen would serve as the township assessor. Given his experience in Kentwood and familiar with Cascade Township, we think Mr. Johnson would be a natural fit to serve as a township assessor. Cascade and Kentwood feature similar commercial and industrial profiles, which is an important part of the assessor position. And our entities have worked closely together on several projects, including our current glut of hotel tax tribunal cases. The personnel finance committee discussed this at their October meeting and have recommended the township board approve the contract. The cost for the service is two thousand dollars per month, which is the same as the previous contract that's currently being, is currently budgeted in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one budget. Jen and Andy are here to answer any questions you may have. But the recommendation is to approve the professional assessor services agreement with Mr. Johnson.
Trustee Shipley?
Welcome to the board meeting. Just out of curiosity, how far down the road or how many months or years will it take to bring you on up to the level where we can tell him to go home?
So I'm currently in the program right now, and my narrative will be due in August and a test in September.
Also, it's a pretty close term, short term. Okay, that's the only question. Because I'm real bullish on if we need people in our house, we should hire them into our house.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's all I have. Thank you.
We did this before, John, when Roger had attained his level four too. So it's something we've done.
Sure.
I'd recommend we approve the professional assessor services agreement with Andy Johnson.
That I support.
That's some, any discussion? It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley to approve the assessor, the agreement for a professional assessor services as as in, as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you both very much.
Thank you. I just want to thank you guys too for your support. And Andy will be a great addition, and he's super supportive of me also. So I just want to thank you all from the the board. Thank you.
Thanks for making us look good. Appreciate it. Item one, one zero twenty twenty one. Consider request for proposals for a township parks, recreation and open space plan. Manager Swayze?
So the township parks committee is currently in the process of updating the Cascade Charter Township Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. So the plan that we have have currently covers the years of two thousand fourteen to two thousand nineteen. We initially had planned to update the plan in two thousand twenty, that way delayed a little bit because of the pandemic. So we started working that on that in two thousand twenty-one. The plans required by the state of Michigan in order to qualify for the Michigan D N R Parks and Recreation related grant programs, that includes the Natural Resources Trust Fund, the Land and Water Conservation Fund, the Recreation Passport Grant Program, which are the three big ones. So the last time we tapped into those programs was in two thousand eight. We use those funds to cover the purchase, to help cover the purchase of Peace Park. So the Parks Committee originally intended to do the plan update internally, using themselves and staff. However, after evaluating the current staff workloads and timing, they're both the committee and staff, about hiring a consultant to finish the update would be in the best interest of the township. The selected consultant would work with the community, Parks Committee, township staff and township board to update the township parks and recreation plan to make sure that we maintain eligibility for the Michigan D N R administrative grant programs. So I put the schedule in the staff report for you. If it's approved by the township board tonight, we would issue it tomorrow. Proposals would be due November nineteenth. The Parks Committee would evaluate the proposals the week of November twenty-ninth and make a recommendation to the board on December seventh to be considered by the board at our December meeting and December fifteenth. Project would begin on January third, and we conclude before the end of July two thousand twenty-two or before. So I've talked enough about the plan itself. I did lay out the scope of services. The scope of services for this R F P is pretty important because the plan is required to have certain things in it in order to qualify for the grant. So once we submit it, the D N R will actually review that and send us a letter back stating whether we met the minimum qualification. So we spent quite a bit of time outlining the scope of services. So the R F P also indicates project activities that the township staff is responsible for, hopefully to bring the price of those proposals down a little bit. There's stuff that we already have that we can offer that we don't need the consultant to duplicate. In addition, the Parks Township, the Cascade Township Parks Committee has already undertaken some significant public input activities. They did a community-wide survey and they did an open house. The details of those activities are found at the end of the R F P proposal. So and the scope of services does say that the selected consultant will be responsible for reviewing and analyzing those public activities and making any recommendations if additional input is either recommended or actually required by the D N R guidelines. So the Parks Committee did review the R F P and recommended the township board approve the issuance of the R F P. The Parks Committee would be responsible for reviewing the submissions and then making the recommendation to the township board regarding the proposals. Just like most of our R F Ps, there's no direct cost to the township, only staff time related to issuing it. We're recommending, like we have with our other R F Ps, that the R F P itself not disclose the budget for the proposal to ensure that the proposals are developed relative to completing the scope of services rather than meeting a budget. However, based on the cost proposals we stream for the strategic plan, we would estimate that the cost would be between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars and would be included in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget when it's proposed. With that, the Parks Committee has recommended the township board issue the Cascade Charter Township Request for Proposals for a Township Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan.
Trustee Shipley?
Just got a question. Ben, we've been fortunate that when we send out our Ps, we get a wide spectrum of costs. How many people or how many companies do you figure you'll be sending our Ps to?
So we'll send the R F P directly to about a dozen companies. I would expect that it would be picked up by the the general trade publications as they usually are. So we usually also get responses from agencies that we didn't send directly to. Based on some responses that Ada got recently and some other communities, I would hope that we would have at least a half of those.
Okay, that gives us a nice broad spectrum.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
I'm, I move to approve the issuance of the R F P for a Township Park Recreation and Open Space Plan.
Support, I ship it.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the request for proposals for a Township Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item one one one, twenty twenty one, consider policy for access to township legal services.
So we've seen an increase in our legal services costs for fiscal year two thousand one, which recently required a budget amendment for legal services to be by the township board. And in full disclosure, we will probably have another one before the end of the fiscal year. Really, two thousand twenty-one has been a perfect storm to our legal services. We have a new boarding commission members. We have a new township attorney. We had our in-depth special assessment district process for the Letterway Lake and Thornapple River. We have every single hotel in the township has appealed their values, which is the, what I was referring to with Jennifer and and Andy working on those together with Cascade and Catwood. And of course, we've had our P F O S issue as well. So when the Personnel Finance Committee reviewed the legal invoices prior to recommending the budget amendment, they also made a recommendation that a policy be established regarding who can access the township legal services to make sure that we're ensuring the costs are tracked and controlled to the greatest extent possible while ensuring the necessary services remain accessible. So I did include the draft policy in your packet for review. The policy states that it's the policy of the Cascade Township Board that all access to township legal services be limited to those identified in this policy and through the means outlined in this policy. The policy is intended to assure accurate accounting of the use of the township legal services and ensure proper authorization is sought before access is granted. Some of the highlights, it designates who may access the legal services and whom, if anyone, they need to notify to get permission from prior to making the contact, designates that the point of first contact will always be the township attorney. Though typically, a matter is then referred to a expert in the firm, and then the contact can continue through those people. And then the approval of the legal invoices are responsibility of the township supervisor and the township manager. So typically, they're sent to the supervisor. She reviews them, I review them, and then they get submitted to accounting for payment. And then we also make sure the legal invoices are circulated among all the staff. A lot of time, there are billable services on our legal invoices. For example, with planning commission cases, if we have to have a legal opinion on a P U D or an interpretation, we actually charge that to the developers as well. So all of the the staff get an opportunity to look at those. So the Personnel Finance Committee discussed this at their October meeting and recommended the township board approve the policy. No financial considerations for approving it, but it will ensure that our costs are tracked and controlled to the greatest extent possible in ensuring that all the. uh in ensuring that all the necessary services remain accessible. So with that, the Personnel Finance Committee has recommended the board approve the township policy for use of township legal services.
Treasurer Pierce?
Just been reviewed with legal counsel?
It has not been reviewed.
I think that might be a good idea. So track, take it, refer back to us if if they get a contact from somebody who's not.
I mean, I would certainly send it to them, but if you guys want it reviewed by legal counsel before I send it to them, uh the best probably the best idea would be to table it and bring it back. I'm sure it won't take them long if you bring it back at the next meeting.
Is that what you're asking about, Ken, or is that is that or is that you're just trying to alert them that they shouldn't respond to every request from somebody in Cascade Township? I mean, because if we could approve this and then we just have to tell our attorney, if you start getting emails from residents or people who aren't authorized, you it's your job to not respond.
Somebody on the DDA calls Holmeyer and asks.
Correct.
Question. I'm sorry, I can't explain.
Right, so I I I don't think it 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 affects the policy, but I think it it affects the they need to know, just like we've asked McKenna to tell us if we're taking outside the scope. I think we just need to tell o- our attorney that, hey, just don't answer any ad hoc question, email, et cetera. We kind of put a bind on them, but they just need to know about this policy. I don't think I don't so I don't know if you're saying, do we need to alert them of the policy first or do we need them to review the policy?
I think just alert them to it.
I think you're, it's a good point and it's probably fine, but I it might be good practice that before we approve, before the seven of us approve any policy that legal counsel should review it and make sure it's okay because the some groups like the DDA are are have a lot of separate authority. So just as practice, it seems like any policy should just be approved by counsel in case there's some. I don't anticipate this, but just to be safe, I I feel like we should.
But aren't we the ones that set policy?
Yeah, but we don't know the law. That's why we have an attorney, so.
Why don't, well, we've done this many times. Can we approve the policy contingent upon final approval and review from our legal counsel? With, okay, I see a lot of nodding heads. So with that, I move to approve the policy contingent upon review and approval from our township attorney.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by treasurer Pierce to approve the policy for access to township legal services contingent upon the review and approval of our legal counsel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item one, one, two, twenty, twenty-one from the clerk's office. Considerations for, one, appointment of trustee McDonald to Elections Commission and, two, a resolution to relocate Precinct Nine. The second item requires a roll call vote. Clerks later?
Thank you. In preparation for the twenty twenty-two election year, two items need township board approval. First of all, appointment of trustee to the Election Commission due to the new board term. Secondly, relocation of Precinct Nine to Thornapple Covenant Church. The Election Commission is comprised of the clerk and two trustees, who have numerous responsibilities in ensuring elections are conducted lawfully. These include, just for your information, the establishment of precincts, assessing voting equipment needs, providing election supplies, appointing of precinct inspectors and any other election duties. Currently, uh trustee Kessel and myself serve on the Election Commission. The clerk's office must fill trustee Lewis vacancy and trustee McDonald has graciously agreed to serve in this capacity. The motion by members of the board to appoint trustee McDonald is sufficient. Secondly, precinct locations are determined by the township board. Forest Hills Presbyterian Church is no longer willing to offer their facility for a polling location due to their childcare program. After my deputy clerk brought an election specialist, Jennifer Jagger and myself toured and considered several locations, we determined that Thornapple Covenant Church would be the best fit for Precinct Nine. Thornapple Covenant Church currently hosts Precinct Two and was willing to add Precinct Nine. Resolution for relocation of Precinct Nine is enclosed. So we are recommending a motion to appoint trustee McDonald to the Election Commission and adoption of a resolution to relocate Precinct Nine. The resolution is also in your packet tonight. Are there any questions?
I have a couple of questions. You see, you have two trustees to ensure that the elections are fair and legal. Who was the second trustee in trustee Lewis' absence last election?
So last term, it was myself and trustee Castle and trustee Lewis. Trustee Lewis' term has ended. And that's by state statute, that it's a.
Understood.
Township has clerk, uh Charter Township has clerk and two trustees.
Was he there?
What do you mean?
Was trustee Lewis?
He served on the Election Commission for the last term.
But was he there at the elec? In November, I don't think he was, he wasn't serving on the board. He wasn't serving on a planning commission. How was he doing his duties at the Election Commission? Was anybody taking his place?
He was serving on the board at the time of the last election in November. He was still on the board. We weren't meeting on Election Day. We don't, the Election Commission doesn't meet on Election Day. All of our work is done beforehand. We have a meeting to approve precinct inspectors, for example, and signatures which have to go to the state. So all the work is done prior.
Sometimes far prior.
Yeah, way in advance. Yeah.
So this isn't something on Election Day?
No.
As we talked about, there's many activities that'll happen now, during now and whenever the next election is.
Right.
Um with all due respect to Tom, we heard last month very verbally about some concerns. I'd like to see this issue split into two. One, consider appointment of Tom and two, relocate the precinct instead of bound.
It is two.
Okay.
Which would you like to discuss first, clerks later?
The appointment is listed first. I mean, guess we could have made it A and B, but it's it's two items. Because it's two different actions. One will take a motion and vote, and the other will take a resolution and vote.
Okay. Does it have to be a trustee that would the?
Yes.
State mandates, yes. I make a motion that we approve uh Tom McDonald as an election commission.
Support.
Discussion?
I, the only discussion I have is, once again, Tom got a nasty nasty letter from the state, and I think that us appointing him to that position is going to raise some more comments from John Q. Public. That's my only comment.
Well, in Tom's defense, Tom has corrected that with the county board of commissioners. He did everything that.
And that is why they only issued him a written warning instead of just giving him a five. I read the letter.
Well, it's done now, so I have no.
Nothing to do with this.
I have no problems with trustee McDonald's integrity or intention, or I wouldn't have asked him.
It just seems odd to me that we have elections. What would you call it? It was a campaign finance violation that the state did find to issue a letter and then put him on the Election Commission just a week later. There's something, it just doesn't.
Timmy, there's no relationship between an administrative error, running a campaign and reviewing precincts and the the duties in the Election Commission. There's absolutely zero relationship. So you've got to understand first what Sue has to do in her job and what the commission members do for the election in reviewing precincts and the people who run those has nothing to do with a campaign or a filing error or correcting those.
I think both have to do directly with honesty and integrity, and I agree that the the campaign's over. It's time for us to move on and govern. But this was brought to us the the very next meeting after we just received a letter where the state of Michigan Campaign Finance Bureau formally cited you for violating the the campaign finance law specifically by creating a non-existing committee name and mailing it to thousands of the entire thousands of residents twice, well in excess of $5,000. And this is your third campaign? I mean, creating a fake committee name and mailing it and then saying paid for by non-existent committee name that doesn't match yours and then your home address. It it both directly have to do with honesty and integrity. We have seven trustees and it it seems appropriate, the the concern is valid, that the one trustee that's appointed is the one that was just formally cited.
Grace, I appreciate your tremendous capability to attack people and magnify issues. And it has nothing to do with with this. We have a motion and a support. Why don't we move on and stop attacking people and exaggerating? There's no relationship between a campaign and what's being requested here. There was nothing done with uh that was dishonest or a lack of integrity. Administrative errors were made. They were corrected. Let's, I I agree with you. Let's move on.
It's a motion by.
Trustee Castle.
Trustee Castle, supported by. Treasurer Pierce to appoint trustee McDonald to the Elections Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Opposed? No.
No.
Sounds like it's four, three. Maybe we should. If anyone disagrees, we can do a roll call.
That's what it was, four, three.
So motion carried. Ms. Broad, if it carried, do you need to talk about, do you need specific votes or just four, three? Thank you. Clerks later, second issue.
Well, just a resolution to relocate the precinct as I already stated. Forest Hills Presbyterian Church, who, where I know, I know for at least forty years, possibly longer, served as the venue for Precinct Nine, is no longer willing to offer their facility. We pursued every option that we could to convince them and it was, it was a hard no. So we had to look around and we toured several other venues and and came to the conclusion that Thornapple Covenant would be the the best choice for that. They have the room for it. They have the parking for it. They have the entrance, separate entrances for it. They have uh the ability for signage to direct to the two different precincts. It involves mailing every voter in Precinct Nine a new voter card to notify them of the precinct location change. I did not want to do it, but I was forced to do it. So I'm asking for a resolution to approve the relocation of the precinct.
Motion made. Support.
Motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley to approve the resolution to relocate Precinct Nine. Clerks later, please call the roll.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Treasurer Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Clerks later, yes. Supervisor Laspins.
Yes, motion carried. Item one, one, three. Consider lease agreement with the Gerald R. Ford International Airport Authority for temporary fire station number one location. Manager Swayze?
Great, thank you. So uh we're currently in the design phase of our fire station number one project, uh which will see the current fire station number one building demolished and a new headquarters station built in its place. As part of the project, the fire department's uh going to be required to relocate their station number one operations for up to two years while the project occurs. So as part of the feasibility study that we conducted in two thousand nineteen and two thousand or two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, uh the department studied the best options for relocation of station number one during construction. Uh after evaluating several options, the study recommended temporary lease of part of a building located on the east side of the Gerald R. Ford International Airport and owned by the Airport Authority. Uh so the pros and cons listed from the study, uh it's a rare pros, it's readily available uh to rent in Station One's response area. Uh can house one fire engine, one medic vehicle, four firefighters, one fire chief and one inspector. Uh we'll note that that pro is listed before we are able to obtain the second space as well. Uh with the second space, we can actually house nearly all of the Station One uh equipment and operations in the facility. Uh so it's available to rent for the time we needed. Uh it is the best option of numerous site studies. Uh some of the car cons, it does shift our coverage sixty to ninety seconds to the south, uh and we'll talk about that in a minute, and I'll ask chief uh majors to talk about that as well. Uh of course, we're going to have a lease cost. Uh it's not ideal for public interaction uh and it does need some minor upgrades to be compliant with NFPA standards. So as I mentioned, since we first began looking at the space, the second space congruent to the initial space came available and that allows us to move the entire Station One operations to the site. Uh so in your packet, I included the proposed lease agreement, the facility layouts and sketches, some of the presentation information. Uh so by acquiring the lease at the airport property, we're able to move the entire Station One operations uh with minimal impact. Uh however, because the move will shift the response sixty to ninety seconds to the south, uh the department does plan on strategically placing response units in the Station Number One Response Area uh during the displacement in order to maximize coverage. So some of the highlights of the lease include a two-year term with a month-to-month option after the initial term. Uh leasing eight thousand six hundred and forty-seven square feet at $12 a square foot. Uh the annual lease adjustment would be based on CPI calculations, uh and it gives us the right to use it as a township fire hall. Uh so if the township board approves the lease, the department will begin the process of making the necessary alterations uh to bring the space in compliance with NFPA regulations. Uh so the architect engineer team selected for the Station One project will assist the township in that as well. The department does not anticipate moving into the space immediately, but acquiring the space now allows us to make those improvements seamlessly move into uh the space quickly, uh once it's required to move the Station Number One project forward. Uh at the August two thousand twenty-one Public Safety Advisory Committee commit, committee meeting, they reviewed the lease and made the recommendation township board approve the lease agreement. Uh the lease agreement's been reviewed and and uh approved by both the township attorney as well as the special township special legal counsel, uh Mr. Van Essen. Uh so at the recommendation of township legal counsel, however, the township is currently conducting a phase one environmental study on the facility uh that was actually finished and transferred to us a couple of days ago. Uh that has since been transferred to our legal counsel and they're reviewing that now as well. Uh so we can talk about that in the recommended action in a second. Uh so the lease rate, $12 a square foot, uh would mean the first year would be an annually lease rate of a hundred and three thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. Uh and again, would be adjusted on the anniversary date by the CPI. Uh so the recommended action is going to be a little bit different than what's written in the packet, based on a conversation today with the township attorney. Um he's recommending a little bit simpler action, uh which would just be to approve the lease agreement with Gerald R. Ford International Airport Authority for temporary station number one facility subject to the township attorney's review and approval. Um he thought that would be a safer motion for the board to make tonight. Obviously, we have fire chief here to talk about what's potentially his new home for the next two years. Uh and with that, we're happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Quick question. Page one and page two, I see it's it says effective September first. Is that just oversight or is there a reason for that?
So the final language would be, I did ask Mr. Clark for the final document and he didn't have that yet, but that would be adjusted to when actually the beginning would be uh which more than likely would be November one, as long as the township attorney uh returns the um positive. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming, chief majors.
Yeah, no problem. Happy to. Does anybody have any questions uh for me? I feel like we've, this has been a long time coming, so we've had a lot of time to process it. But if you have any questions now, I'd be happy to answer.
This is what you wanted from the beginning, Adam?
That's correct. We uh analyzed maybe a dozen or more potential sites that had uh the possibilities uh of of relocating. This is by far the best option, the least expensive, the least invasive, uh the least yeah, kind of upsetting the apple cart, if you will. It uh it's it's a good option. It does shift our operations to the south about a minute and a half, but it does increase uh time to the people that are in that area. So it's it's a, it's a net gain for half of that area and a little bit less. Uh and I guess if you consider the Twenty-Eighth Street corridor, uh we we had a lot of calls on that. So that would be something that uh manager Swayze and I would uh work out as far as temporarily staging some of those operations to kind of soften that uh impact with the uh shipping to the south.
Do we know approximately how many dollars it'll take to get it ready for you?
We're anticipating about twenty-five thousand. Uh we're very confident that we're going to come at that or under it.
I think that was original. I think that was originally a little bit more than that, maybe, or not.
Honestly, the, the airport did quite a bit of improvements to the DHL suite on their own, and it's pretty moving ready right now, with the exception of some flooring and some soft wiring. That wasn't anticipated in the original. They did a lot of that work on their own. So we, we shifted that, those costs.
Any further discussion or questions?
I just went, chief. I, I believe we have a mutual agreement with Kentwood. So I guess the question is, do we have a mutual agreement with Caledonia? Do you see more calls maybe coming in from that area, from the Caledonia or the southern area, because we're now a little more located southerly?
We, we do have automatic mutual aid with, with Caledonia and Kentwood and Dutton and Elton, and they would all benefit greatly from this lease. We, we do cover quite a bit of our neighbors and, and they cover quite a bit of us as well. We are currently doing some internal studies to maximize when we are shifting south to vacate, vacating that kind of busier commercial area. So we've been working with Ada Township and Kenwood to kind of shore up some of those limitations.
Great, thanks.
So it's, it's been a good, a good relationship with all of our neighbors. And we're, we're confident that we'll be, we'll be just fine.
Make a motion to approve the lease agreement.
I, I just have one quick comment here. Our attorney is good with this lease, because I had a lot of concerns about the environmental. He's comfortable with what's going on there.
So the, the attorney has, the attorneys have reviewed the lease document itself already. Have agreed that that is fine. What they haven't had an opportunity to is fully review the environmental study that was issued already. So that just came back, we got that on Monday, I believe. So they still need to review that now. You know, the, the cursory review, the layman's review of, it shows that there is no potential issues there. So that, that should be the end of it, but I haven't gotten that confirmation from the attorney yet. But as far as the language that's included in the lease agreement, they, they, they went back and forth a couple of times, but they're comfortable with what's.
There were no wrecks on the site, right? Is that true?
I, I support Mr. Ship, John's motion.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the lease agreement with the Gerald R. Ford International Airport Authority for temporary fire station number one location contingent upon legal counsel's review and approval.
Of the phase one?
Of both.
Okay.
So the attorney did recommend that we shorten that language, just to say attorney review and approval.
Covers the same thing, and it gives us more wiggle room if, for any unexpected pop-ups.
And I'd like to ask the chief a couple of questions.
Sorry.
Chief, we, we talked a little bit about this environmental, you know, my concerns. You were saying that you're not going to have any contaminants on your trucks out there. You probably aren't even going to wash your trucks out there.
That, that's correct. We, we're going to take some actions, just, we're going to drain our trucks of any foam, even though we don't carry PFOS foam, we're just going to drain them anyway. We won't be putting anything into the sanitary sewers, we won't be putting anything into the drains. We'll wash our trucks off-site. And just, we'll just be careful.
And if you come back from a fire and you have to decontaminate, you're going to do that at fire station two?
That's correct, that is already our policy. Station two has our washers and dryers and extractors. We don't have any of that at station one. The new station will, which we're excited for. So our current policy is, after a structured fire, after any sort of emergency where we have to decontaminate or have those issues, we go directly to station two, where it's got all those appropriate facilities. So none of that would ever occur at the temporary facility.
So we're being real careful at the temporary facility for environmental, and the attorney says he's okay at this point. I'm reluctant. But I'm in.
So again, a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve, as previously stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Article 10, public comments.
If any of our Zoom participants would like to speak during public comments, again, please press the raise your hand, or if you're joining us by phone, star nine, please remember to say your name clearly and your address. And I'll wait a moment, supervisor. Doesn't look like anyone wants to speak via Zoom.
Anyone in person, not to single the one resident here out, but last chance. That will conclude the public comment portion. Article 11, manager comments.
Just a couple of items tonight. So you may have noticed our contractor out working on our pathways, trying to get our new sections nice and finished, so they are required to be substantially complete by the middle of next week. I know the two largest stretches are already done. I haven't had a chance to inspect the other ones yet, but good to see that work out there and going. And already have some ideas about what we might put on the docket for doing next year. And then tonight, I guess, is the, the night of, you know, hopefully wrapping up a few things. I know we've been talking about this lease agreement. We've also been talking about the Park on the Hill for a while. Happy to announce that myself, Grace, and Sue will be closing on that property this Friday. So we will officially own that, and hopefully the Parks Committee will have a conversation in November about how to unveil that purchase to the community. So excited to report back on that, and that's all I've got.
Thank you. Article 12, board member comments.
First of all, I always have to stand up and thank you for coming and sitting through all this stuff that we go through. And anybody out there in La La Land the same way. Well, the other thing I have is, at the last meeting, Tom made reference that I was involved in your little affair. I was not. Do not attempt to throw me under the bus again. That's all I have to say, as you said, let's move on.
John, I didn't throw you under the bus. I had you.
It's done.
I had you on the website, and, and I called you and asked you for your bio, so I could put it on the website, and you gave it to me. So John, I didn't throw you under the bus, I just included you on the website with your permission.
Move on. Rick Merlin contacted me and wanted a bunch of stuff read tonight, this, in the minutes. It's several pages.
Three minutes.
Submit it for, I think I'd like to just submit it to be put in the record. And then there are some some questions. He also sent this to you, Ken, and there were some questions, and I think he wanted answers to. So I'll leave that to you, and this will be in the minutes, there's a nice copy for Sue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? A quick one, we've heard from a couple of residents about, who are in the PFOS areas that are going to get city water, and they have some real valid concerns about how that will affect their road and their landscaping. Manager Swayze is in the process of scheduling a community meeting where they can speak to the engineers, lawyers, everyone, to get that information, but I just want to say we'll, we'll get that scheduled as soon as possible. And then we will work diligently to get the word out to all those affected. Anything else?
Motion for German.
Second.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Rejourned, thank you.